I'd like to call the September meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I'll ask Commissioner Staler to bring the invocation.
Let us pray. We seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and the decisions with impartiality. Amen.
Why don't you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir.
I wish I could check if you see that.
So that's the city council?
No. It's the planning commission. City Council. It's all in the city, is that right?
Yeah. There's two city councils.
I'd like to call the September meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I'll ask Commissioner Staler to bring the invocation.
Let us pray. We seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and the decisions with impartiality. Amen.
Amen.
Why don't you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks? Vice Chairman Staler?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the August meeting of the Planning Commissions? If no correction, they will stand approved as printed. Today, we have five items on our agenda. Before we start the public hearing, I will accept a motion to combine items A and B, which is the same parcel for Town Bank. One is the rezoning request and one is conditional use permit request. We'll have one staff report and separate public hearings.
So move.
Okay, got a motion? Can we do this with a voice vote? All in favor? Anyone object? No, okay. We have one other piece of operation that we need to take care of. Vice Chairman Commissioner Staler like to be disqualified from the first two items on our agenda and has a statement to read.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a personal interest in rezoning requests, RZN 2024-00006, and conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00016 submitted by Town Bank due to my business Corsair Investments LLC, which is located at 321 North Main Street, Suffolk, Virginia 23434. Therefore, I am unable to participate pursuant to 2.2-3112 (A) of the Code of Virginia. For this reason, I will not participate in any discussions or Planning Commission action related to the rezoning, excuse me, rezoning and CUP.
Okay, we're going to, before moving to the public hearing, we have these two items that were just recently discussed. One is the rezoning request, RZN 2024-00006 Town Bank, and the second item would be a conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00016 Town Bank. Mr. Wine, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2024-006 Town Bank submitted by Jim Smith, Town Bank applicant and property owner in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official map of the city of Suffolk in order to change the zoning from RLM Residential Low-Medium Density Zoning District to O&amp;I Office Institutional Zoning District for property located at 410 North Broad Street. Zoning map 34G104, parcel 7 through 22*, PT5*, 6, and zoning map 34G10A, parcel 1, to O&amp;I Office Institutional. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium Zoning District. The Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. The conditional use permit associated with this request is a conditional use permit that is dependent on the rezoning request that would allow for the bank to operate with a drive-through use. I'll read that full caption before the public hearing for that conditional use permit. But when you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2024-006. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present the staff's report on both the rezoning and the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Wine stated, this is a request to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk from RLM Residential Low-Medium to OI Office Institutional Conditional Zoning District on property located on North Broad Street. A conditional use permit, CUP 2024-016, was submitted concurrently with this request. However, the rezoning must precede the CUP in order for the proposed use to be allowed. The applicant is proposing to rezone both properties and obtain a concurrent CUP in order to establish a bank with a drive-through use on the southwest corner of the property. The subject parcel is located on the corner of North Broad Street and West Constance Road. The property is roughly 6.46 acres in size, and the current address is 410 North Broad Street. The subject properties are located within the Central Growth Area, Core Support District, and the Suffolk Voting Borough. To the north of the property is the Riverview subdivision, consisting of single-family detached dwellings, zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium. To the south is single-family detached homes, zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium. To the east is Constance Woods Single Family Attached Condominiums, zoned RU Residential Urban, and office uses, zoned OI Office Institutional. And to the west are single-family detached homes, zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium, and office uses, zoned OI Office Institutional. Before you is the rezoning exhibit, which outlines the boundaries of the parcels to be rezoned from RLM to OI Conditional for the purposes of establishing a bank with a drive-through use. The bank use is permitted by right in the OI zoning district. The drive-through use requires the conditional use permit. The proffers limit the more intense uses to the parcels, as well as provide proffered elevations for the current proposed CUP area and the future area to be developed at a later time. As such, staff has no concerns with the proffers. As it relates to the CUP, this is the exhibit before you on the screen. The CUP is to establish a bank with a drive-through use on the southwest corner of the 6.46 acre parcels. The provided conceptual plan outlines the total area to be covered with 1.75 acre CUP. The use will take access from the existing access points on North Broad Street and West Constance Road. No additional access has been requested at this time. This exhibit shows proposed landscaping and will be finalized during site plan review to ensure it meets the minimum standards outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. In summary, the proposed rezoning of parcels 34G10 (A) * 7 through 22* PT5* 6, and 34G10 (A) * 1 from RLM Residential Low-Medium to OI Office Institutional Conditional is consistent with the policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The existing parcels meet the locational requirements outlined for the O&amp;I zoning district, and the proposed use is expected to be compatible with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezoning request, RZN 2024-006, with the proffers as submitted. Additionally, staff finds that the conditional use permit request meets the criteria set forth in Section 31-306, 31-406, and 31-709 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-016 with conditions. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. The public hearing today is for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponent, 15 minutes for the opponent, and five minutes for rebuttal. I will now open the public hearing on rezoning request, RZN 2024-00006 Town Bank. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tyler Rose. I'm a local land use attorney with the law firm Williams Mullen here today on behalf of the applicant Town Bank. I'd like to thank staff for their hard work on this application and for the recommendations of approval and for the comprehensive presentation. Try not to be duplicative in my comments here today. As stated, Town Bank is requesting this rezoning and the following conditional use permit to redevelop the property with a bank with a single lane drive-through to service the banking needs of the surrounding community. As you can see from the elevations in your packet, the building will be a very attractive building with very lush ground cover and landscaping that will bring new life to this prominent corner in the community. The bank held a community meeting on September 12th at the property where the bank representatives discussed the proposed projects with the neighbors. I do have the meeting notice and sign-up sheet that I will place in the basket. Baylott would like to provide that as well. I don't believe that's in your packets, but there was some correspondence with staff on providing that for you here today. The bank submitted voluntary proffers with the rezoning to restrict the future use of the property and to govern the development of the property. And as noted in the staff report and the staff's presentation, the rezoning conforms with the policies of the Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO. So we would respectfully request the commission's recommendation of approval on this application, and I'll stand by for any questions also here with me today in support of the application, our representatives from the bank, and the projects, engineering, and architecture teams to answer any questions that I cannot. So thank you for your time this afternoon.
Be no question now. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
No, sir. We're just here for questions.
Okay, thank you. So we will move to the, is anyone in the audience that's in opposition to this request? Ma'am, are you in opposition? Will you come up to the podium, please, and give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Janice Sadler, 418 North Broad Street. My concern is there is a buffer around the existing homes, but even with the buffer, ordinances keep being changed, and it doesn't seem to make much difference if those living close by are object or do not object. So my only objection really is that there is not a deep enough buffer between this business and where the bank will go and where other properties is, because who is to say what other requests will come up in several years to put another business in those areas? And you, at this point, do not know what you will do, because it's a future event, and you don't know who will be on the board. So there's no way to even guess about what might happen. And if there isn't proper buffer between all the neighborhoods, then you're going to lose the neighborhood. It's going to go down in value. We have enough places in this city that aren't taken care of as it is, and I can see another one coming up if the buffer is not large enough to prevent looking and seeing that you have a business in your backyard. So the only thing I can see is make the buffer deeper, build a 10-foot privacy fence all the way around so neighbors do not have to look at a business, maybe even taller. I'm not against a business going there. I'm against what it will do to the existing neighborhood. Most of us do not have the funds to pack up and move if it bothers us. I'm 79. I have health problems. I just can't pack up and move. I moved in this neighborhood because it's quiet. It's very peaceful. There's no disturbances with traffic, with lights, with businesses. And if I ever, maybe I didn't do my research good enough. I'll blame that on me. But if I ever dreamed that church was going to go out of business and a business would be there, I would not be there. And I'll probably be one of the first to sell my house. And if I have to take a loss, or maybe I will rent it and I won't keep it up and watch the whole neighborhood go downhill. And if the bank goes there, I want it to be successful. I was a small business person once upon a time, very small, especially in comparison to a bank. But I'm more concerned about the neighbors. They can't just pack up and leave. They don't have the finances to build whatever fencing is needed to protect their property. We don't have the money to hire high-priced attorneys to keep other businesses from coming out in the future. And on a plan like this, we do have to look at future events if you care about the people. And I care about the business. I'd love to see it in and succeed, but I care about the people that live there a lot more. It's their life. They put their life expenses. They put their dreams. They put their hopes. They love this community. The bank doesn't live there. The people, the bank lives there, but the people don't live there. So any nuisance that comes up, they don't have to put up with. But the people that exist there have to put up with any nuisance caused by a business and what other future zoning could happen. I'm thinking more of Western and Broad. I mean, my backyard backs up to the narrow part of this property. Now, if they would like to give that property to me and my neighbor, I'll fence it off. They can take the trees down, and I won't say a word. But I'd hate to see the neighborhood diminish in value and the dreams of people. I mean, we're talking about people. I don't know if you're talking about money. I don't know all the rationale behind this business. My talk is about people, the lives of people that live there, their children, their parents. And I really hope you consider that. And just remember, I hope you're really hearing me. My heart is for the people, and it's not against the bank. It's not against the bank whatsoever. I've heard great things about Town Bank. It's putting the proper buffer and the proper protection from what will go in and what could go in in the future. So I really do hope that you look at it being your home backed up to this business. You being 79, 80, maybe even older, you don't have the funds to go sell your house at a lower value, pay a moving company, pack you up, stay in a hotel while you look at a neighborhood, and have to leave your friends and maybe your family behind and your church. So it affects every aspect of the lives of the people that exist there. It's not, there's just their yard. It's every aspect. So I just really implore you to please think about enlarging the buffer to where nothing can ever go in there, do privacy fence to protect the people that live there. This is their life. It's the business versus somebody's daily life. And I thank you so much for allowing me to speak and listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Getting up, sir? Okay. So that ends the time for the opposition. Now, Mr. Rose, do you have any rebuttal to Mrs. Sadler's comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we're, of course, appreciative of neighbors coming out and making their voices heard and, you know, being part of the civic process. Town Bank obviously is concerned about and has an eye towards the future use of this property. That's why we have submitted some very comprehensive proffers that will limit the more intense uses on the property. We've held a community meeting, and we engaged with the surrounding neighborhood. So we will continue to have that engagement going forward as this bank operation is developed. There is, the property will be developed in accordance with the UDO, and there has been very extensive landscaping planned for this property that's shown on the plans that we have submitted here today. And the O&amp;I use is consistent with the surrounding zoning of the area. There are O&amp;I properties and commercial properties on either side of the property, the east and the west along Constance Road there as well. So this will not be an overly intense use for the area. It is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and we are mindful of the future use of the property. I do have a representative of Town Bank here as well, just to speak a little bit to the bank and their future plans with the property.
Good afternoon. My name's Thomas Woodward. I work for Town Bank, and perhaps more importantly for this conversation, I live in the Riverview neighborhood. So I just wanted to share that, as was mentioned earlier, we want to be a good neighbor to this community. You know, the way this building will be constructed, the intent is for it to blend in with the community and be a complement to the existing homes there. The landscape plan will be such that the building is attractive, but also that it buffers this property from the neighboring properties. The lights will be such that they will not shine on neighboring properties. We want to be good neighbors to the community. So I understand the concerns. This is a change, and change always brings a little bit of skepticism. But I hope you'll understand that our goal here is to be a good neighbor. This is relocating a branch we have just down the street in a smaller building that would simply relocate to this property. And again, you know, several folks that work for the bank live in this neighborhood. The last thing we want to do is be bad neighbors. We want to be, you know, a good fit to the community and an asset, not a detriment. Thank you.
Mr. Rose, you finished all your rebuttal. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Yeah. Move approval, RZN 2024-006.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
We got a second for approval? Any discussion of the motion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. So I don't bank with Town Bank. However, I do live in the Riverview neighborhood and very familiar with the property. I have friends that attend the church, and I think anytime, you know, a church is, I don't want to say going out of business per se, but, you know, having to relocate because of the congregation side, it's a sad thing, for sure. But that being said, I know, as Mr. Woodward mentioned, there are several people in the neighborhood that work for Town Bank, probably a lot that bank with Town Bank. In my experience, Town Bank is a Hampton Roads bank and has, seems to historically show to be a good neighbor. I'm really kind of counting on that, because, like I said, I live there. I am glad to hear that it is relocating another bank, because I don't know that, you know, we need so many branches. So that's probably a good thing. I appreciate what the resident said about ample buffers. I'm also counting on that, and I think there will be. So I just wanted to speak in support of it as a neighbor. So, thank you.
Any other discussion or motion? If not, Mr. Wine, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Missed, pronounced your name, Rose. We got half the ballot, what? Now we're going to move to the second half. We're going to move to conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00016 Town Bank. I don't think there's anyone, any additional comments at this point? I'll just have the caption read this one.
Yes, sir. So what you all are about to consider is conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-016 Town Bank submitted by Jim Smith, applicant on behalf of Town Bank, property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a Town Bank with a drive-through use on the property located at 410 North Broad Street, zoning map 34G10A, parcel 7 through 22* PT5* 6, and zoning map 34G10A, parcel 1. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium. Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024016.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor of this request? Now, we're talking about a conditional use request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I would just reiterate my thank you to the staff and note that the applicant has reviewed the conditions and finds them acceptable. So we would request your recommendation of approval for this use permit application as well. Thank you. I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Is there one else, anyone else in favor of this request? Okay. Are there anyone in opposition to this request? Ms. Sattler, you got your hand up. You want to come up and make any other comments?
I'm sorry, but I'm hearing impaired, so I'm having a hard time hearing what some of you are saying and what he just proposed. And I go back to the same thing. I just want a larger buffer around the houses on Broad and Western so that in the future, no business can end up back there. We're rezoning now. So it'll get rezoned again someday, I'm sure. And I may not be here, but it'd be nice to have it settled while I am. I just, that's all I ask, is for a larger buffer between the houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sattler. Is there one else, anyone else who have any comments in opposition? That will complete the time for the opposition. We got five minutes for rebuttal to any other comments? No, no comments? Okay, thank you. At that point, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I make a motion for approval of CUP 2024-00016.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion?
Can they amend to include the conditions?
Yes. With the conditions, yeah. Okay, thank you. Call for the vote, Mr. Wyman.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Town Banks, all the staff that is here. The next item on our agenda, continue where you can retrieve Commissioner Steller. Okay, we have Commissioner Steller back with us. The next item on our agenda today for a public hearing is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-0136508, Holland Road. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-0136508, Holland Road, submitted by Kathy Holland, applicant and property owner on behalf of Kathy and Roderick Holland, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31701B13 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached on property located at 6508 Holland Road, zoning map 40, parcel 16. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough Zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this, when you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024013. Staff Planner making his Planning Commission debut. Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached at 6508 Holland Road. The subject property is part of the Holy Neck Voting Borough and located within the Village of Holland. The subject property is located in the RM Residential Medium Zoning, Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The surrounding parcels to the north, east, and west are detached single-family dwellings zoned RM. To the south is a Dollar General zoned A Agricultural. The applicant's request is to establish a detached accessory dwelling unit, 640 square feet in size. There is currently a detached garage on the property which will be torn down and replaced with a new detached garage that will include a lean-to and a first-floor in-law suite for the applicant's disabled brother. Based on the provided site plan, the proposed structure complies with all setbacks outlined for the RM zoning district. The provided site plan and aerial view of the subject property shows that there is more than enough parking on the subject property for the one additional parking space required by the accessory dwelling unit. Floor plan, as shown on this slide, shows 640 square feet of living space, complete with a kitchen and bath. Since the principal dwelling unit has a gross floor area of 2,480 square feet, the 640-square-foot proposed dwelling unit will be well under the maximum of 1,000 square feet allowed in Section 31-701B13 of the UDO. The UDO further outlines that a minimum of 200 square feet is required per person for a detached accessory dwelling unit. Being that the proposed accessory dwelling unit would be 640 square feet, there is more than enough space for the one proposed occupant. Staff believes that the proposed accessory dwelling unit at 6508 Holland Road is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-013 with the conditions stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name because I don't want to butcher it today. Thanks for your debut with us today. Welcome. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in favor of this request, conditional use, conditional use permit request,
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the Planning Commission. It's been a long haul to get here, and it started out being a simple process of building my brother a small in-law suite since his health is declining and attach it to a new garage and tear down the old ugly garage. And I hope that's still where we're headed, but really, it should have been simple and hopefully it will be. But that's all we're after, just getting that little small section of apartment for him that's ground level for wheelchair accessibility and attaching it to a new garage and tearing down the old one. So I'm happy for any questions that anybody has.
Well, I'll save the question till after the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Hello, I'm Rod, Kathy's husband. This is my brother-in-law, James. He'll be the one utilizing the property if passed. The property will, it will be a whole lot better than what we have there now with the old broke garage, you know? It'll be a complement to the area, and really, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, both of you. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition? We haven't got any opposition, so we don't have any rebuttals, so we can close the public hearing at this point. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of CUP 2024-00013 with any conditions? Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion?
She, why did it feel like she had to take an act of Congress to get this done on their property, their land, and it's not outrageously what they're asking for? Why did it take so, why did it take so much? Can somebody answer that?
Yeah, so generally, a conditional use permit like this would be relatively straightforward. However, due to the placement of the accessory dwelling on the property, they did necessitate the need for a boundary line adjustment plat as well. So they've been working with us over the course of several months to modify that boundary line. Placement of that boundary line was complicated further by the neighboring property, drainfield being in the vicinity as well. So that had to be navigated. But we were able to get to this point, and we're excited to hopefully get this across the finish line for her next month at council.
I hope you live a long time to enjoy it, young man.
Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Wyman, your call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Ms. Holland, and for your brother-in-law, Mr. James. This will go to City Council on October 16th with the recommendation for approval. Thank you again. The next item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00014, assisted living facility. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-014, assisted living facility submitted by Chin Wendu Nagbo, applicant and property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an adult care residence assisted living facility on property located at 216 Penner Street, zoning map 34G, 19A, parcel 27. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough Zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-014. Once again, Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Good afternoon again, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish an assisted living facility at 216 Penner Street. The subject property is located within the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District, and the Suffolk Voting Borough. Additionally, the property is part of the HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The property is located in the RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District and is surrounded on all sides by single-family homes also zoned RM. The applicant's request is to establish an assisted living facility used to provide housing to an underserved portion of the population. The proposed assisted living facility will serve up to 13 full-time residents. There are 11 bedrooms plus, thus two rooms are proposed to be shared with two beds. This would require approval from the Department of Social Services. The UDO calls for a minimum of .3 parking spaces per room, meaning a total minimum of four spaces for the proposed use. As shown in the provided site plan, there is adequate space for the minimum four vehicles. This would also be supplemented by the availability of street parking on Penner Street. 4,248-square-foot facility is proposed to be open and supervised 24 hours a day by staff consisting of a manager slash administrator, up to three caregivers, a cook slash chef, a nurse, and contract staff. The staff is not proposed to be housed on-site. The facility is proposed to offer both indoor and outdoor activities for its residents and provide basic food services. The facility is not proposed to be a medical facility and is only proposed to provide supervision and personal care to its residents. Assisted living facilities, like proposed, are subject to licensing and approval by the Virginia Department of Social Services. The proposed use is not envisioned to produce any adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Any alterations visible from public right-of-way will require administrative approval or approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission as this property is within the Historic Conservation Overlay District. Staff believes that the proposed change in use of an assisted living facility at 216 Penner Street is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-014 with the conditions stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew, again. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is John Sandell. I'm the civil engineer who helped prepare the submittal package. And mostly because the owner cannot be here today, I wanted to introduce myself and let you know I'll be available if there are any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Sandell.
Our address is 4104 Clintwood Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23452.
Thank you for that, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition?
Marvin Beatty. I live two, right next door, 214 Penner Street. My wife and I have lived 50 years on Penner Street. We were, at every meeting, when the city decided to go to a historical district. I hadn't seen anything about the historical district on any of these maps and things. But we were told at the beginning of it that if it's a single-family home, it had to remain a single-family home. If it was a business and it closed up, and it was in where it was a single-family home, it had to go back to a single-family home. They told us that Penner Street was the prime jewel of the historical district. It's got over a dozen homes that were built either in the late 1800s or early 1900s. If you come down to my house and walk up to the traffic light, you'll just see some beautiful homes and beautiful landscape. Now, I'm not against medical facilities. We need everything we can get with all the people moving here. But I'm against this home being turned into a business, and it is a business even though it's medical. My wife and I had to put her aunt into an assisted living home in Shelby, North Carolina. And when we went down, they had two, and we went down and checked them out. The first thing they told us was, we care about our patients being able to get out of this facility if there's a fire. This is a three-story house, and I hope they're not planning on putting people on the third floor. But these facilities had wide-open doors, and the beds had wheels on them that they could roll the patients out that couldn't get in a wheel. could roll the patients out that couldn't get in a wheelchair. They had wheelchairs all up and down the hall where they, if a fire happened, they could get the staff, they had a large staff, and I realize it's bigger than what this place is going to be, to help them get out. Now, I've been in that house many times, we, it's been single-family ever since the late 1800s, and the doors are not big on that house. I don't think you can roll a bed out of it. And the stairs are very steep, and when you come out, it's a very small yard to get away from the house. Just last week, I saw a house, I think it was on Northbrook. It was a three-story home, although it was a newer home, and smoke was bellowing out of the house through all the windows and the top, and that was before the fire department got there. And it said the three people were in the house, but they, on the first floor, they were able to escape. Now, my understanding is it's smoke that kills more people in a fire than the fire itself because of the, how rapidly the smoke forms and you breathe it in, and that's pretty much it. Also, I kind of hate to bring this up, but there is a sewage problem. I've had to have the city come out and pump the sewage, their sewage was backing my, up into my sewage. And you add another, what, this is 11 rooms, if they put two in a room? I don't know, that's what they did down in Shelby, but maybe they only have one, but still, you're talking about 15 people with the staff or more. I couldn't hear the man, I'm 84, I don't hear like I used to, but I think I heard something about 23 parking spaces. I'd like to know where they're going to get them. I mean, there is really limited parking on Penner Street, and the people over on Grace have nowhere to park, so they come over on Penner and park. And when they, Penner Street at one time was, was a single, they, the historical people put it, because of the traffic, put it into a one-lane road. Well, eventually, they decided to take that out and, and make it into a, a two-way, two-way street, a lot of traffic there on that street. I had a lot of other things I wanted to say, but I can't remember them all. But anyway, I am, I, I'm not opposed to a facility like this, but I think it should be like the ones we have now and like the ones there. It should be a very fire-safe facility. You, you don't build schools anymore, two stories or three stories. They build schools one story because of fire problem, fire. This house being 150, about 150 years old, that's, that's dry timber in that house. And of course, God forbid that it ever would catch on fire, even if it, she can sell this house, everything that she's done so far is what a house flipper would do, except for the rooms inside. And a single-family could be put in that house, and I believe it would get a, a good profit for it, as happened before. So anyway, I'm, I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to pull mainly, though, on the historical part. Suffolk was started in 1742. That's a lot of history, and people were really interested in it back then. I mean, I don't hear anything, I know that was a different city council, that was a different thing, you know, growth and all that kind of thing, but if you, some of you may know Savannah lost a third of their historical district before somebody stepped in and stopped them. If you've ever been there, and, and we have another, a neighbor here who I believe wants to speak, who just recently, his home looks like one of those Savannah homes, it's gorgeous. And there are beautiful homes all up and down that street, and I'd like to see it stay. This could open the door for other things to come in. I mean, how can you turn down other people that come in for other reasons, business-wise? Anyway, that's pretty much my case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Kermit Hobbs, I live in West Haven Lakes, and I'd like to express my opposition to this application. I have a great interest in Suffolk history, and I base my opposition on this fact. I serve on the Suffolk Historic Landmarks Commission, and I understand your role in making the final decision, following a recommendation by the Suffolk Planning Department. I realize that your decisions are not necessarily always popular, rather, you make them based on criteria that you've been given in your role. Indeed, this is the purpose of having a citizen-based community, commission making these sometimes tough decisions. There've been a number of occasions where we on the Historic Landmarks Commission have received applications that checked all the boxes and were recommended or not recommended by the Planning Department. Sometimes we disagree with the recommendations and rule differently from the department's recommendations. For us, the reasons for our actions might include matters of safety or structural integrity or a lack of available materials to require the, to, to fulfill the property, to ensure that the follow, property follow the recommendations of the Planning Department. I feel that the prop, application under consideration today is just such a case. The Penner Street corridor that we're considering is arguably one of our most important historic neighborhoods. Indeed, it's part of the Suffolk Historical Overlay District. As such, it requires that properties be maintained at a level higher than that of the non-historical areas of the city. I'm not suggesting that the owners of this facility in question would not be abided by any written regulations or guidelines, but rather, I do believe that future possible investors in Penner Street properties could be adversely affected, influenced by the presence of an assisted living facility in this historic neighborhood. I believe that our historic neighborhoods are delicate entities that must be carefully protected to preserve their integrity. I therefore oppose the approval of this subject property, and I respectfully request that your vote, that you vote to oppose this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. You've got six minutes left for opposition.
Chairman and members of the committee, my name is Brian McCormley. I'm a resident at 204 Bank Street, about a block away from the subject property. I'm here on behalf of my wife and myself to express our opposition to this conditional use permit. First and foremost, authorizing an assisted living facility for 13 people in a single-family residence at this location is entirely inconsistent with the existing historical residential neighborhood. The surrounding properties are historic homes, as been mentioned, and they are primarily single-family owner-occupied residences, including my own. Approving an assisted living facility in this location for 13 residents without imposing any restrictions or limitations which are otherwise permissible under the law for facilities exceeding eight residents is wholly inconsistent with the current and long-term objectives of this historic neighborhood. Secondly, staff's recommendation memo fails to address a critically important element in the governing ordinance. The proposed use of an assisted facility must, one, not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of nearby properties, or, two, substantially diminish neighboring property values. Here, the staff's memo summarily concludes that the use and enjoyment factor is satisfied, but doesn't explain why. Just to conclude a remark. Moreover, and more importantly, the memo fails entirely to address neighboring property values. There is no mention whatsoever in the impact on neighboring property values in the staff's recommendation memo. Since the memo fails to mention or analyze this critically important element in the ordinance, we respectfully submit that its conclusions and recommendations are fatally flawed and must be rejected from our perspective as homeowners. An assisted living facility in this location for 13 residents will substantially diminish neighboring property values, and for this reason alone, the application should be denied. The third point, parking. Staff recommended the use of the lowest permitted parking requirement to justify its approval in this case. In so doing, the memo surprising, seemingly fails to consider the parking needs of the staff, including a manager, three caregivers, and doesn't consider the visitors who we presume will be frequenting the property to visit with their relatives. Using the minimum under the ordinance is not explained or justified in the memo at all. In our view, there's insufficient parking provided for the approval of this application. Those are our points of opposition. I would like to make one other point to clarify. If the commission goes ahead and approves this application over the residents' objections, at a very minimum, we would respect, respectfully submit that the staff's proposed conditions for approval should be amended to specifically restrict or prevent the applicant from using this, another permitted use that is authorized under the assisted living facility definition. Let me explain. Many of the staff's conclusions, including those set forth in paragraphs F, G, and H of the memo, are based upon the use of the facility for elderly residents. However, none of the proposed conditions limit the approval to the care of elderly residents only. In fact, it simply grants the authorization to establish an assisted living facility. As the commission is well aware, the assisted living definition is far more expansive than this narrow proposed use. Therefore, it should, at a bare minimum, condition approval on the specific use requested for elderly inhabitants only, and limit that number, and require reapplication prior to changing to another use authorized under the applicable definition. Thank you for your time.
You've got one minute left. Anyone else have any comments?
Good, good, good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Crocker. I'm here on behalf of me and my husband, who reside at 220 Penner Street, which is actually two houses down from the proposed assisted living facility. We purchased our property in 2017, and it was pretty much in a dilapidated state, and we have taken several years to bring the property back to what I consider to be a very attractive property in the historic district. And we have done that little by little, and pretty much used our life savings to bring it back to a very beautiful historic piece of property. My husband took windows out, built them by hand, the wood windows. We have done everything by the historical guidelines, and our concern is, what will this do to our property value that we have worked so hard to bring back to its historic state? When we have this assisted living facility two spaces down from us, when we bought, when we thought we were buying our dream home of, a historic home, and now we're faced with this, this property that's going to be now assisted, you know, living facility two spaces down from us. And I know I'm out of time, so thank you for that quick one minute. I have much more to say, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. That closes the time for opposition. Mr. Sandell, are you ready for rebuttal? We'll open for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can speak to a few of the things that I've heard in the opposition. I know that we've worked with staff regarding the inclusion of a fire suppression system, an automatic sprinkler system, to address some of the concerns about fire safety for the assisted living use. We've also included a lift in the stairs for access to the second and third floor. And I've, as I understand it from other facilities similar to this, where you do have more than one story and it is an assisted living use, the fire departments frequently in different jurisdictions will drill or check to make sure that the staff is aware of the necessity to get everyone out on time and to make sure they know how to use the lifts quickly and ably to, to exit the building in the case of, of an emergency. With regard to parking, I, I wish that assisted living centers had the parking demand that they, that may seem to some people like they would need, and that they had that much visitation, but I, statistically and looking at the parking gen numbers, it doesn't really suggest that. That's typically not the case. They just don't have that high frequency of visitors. I believe as a civil engineer that what's proposed or required by staff is likely adequate for this facility. I also heard discussion about, concern about aesthetics and value. I can't speak as a professional about real estate values, but I can speak about the aesthetics. I'm not aware of anything proposed in the plans by the architect that changes or alters the historic nature or the exterior appearance of the building, other than a ramp in the rear that's required. Other than that, I, I had no other further items for rebuttal, but I am available to answer any questions.
We're now close to public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a few questions for the, is it Matthew? I'll be honest with you, first time I, I saw this, when I got my packet, I looked at it and red flags started just bloom, 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 concerned with a assisted living facility, assuming that it would be elderly, and having had my mother in on assisted living and so therefore know what was looked at there versus a three-story frame structure. And so I had immediate concerns, even after seeing that the city would be requiring a fire suppression system. But I was also concerned very much about the, did the fire department, I, I heard you comment, the Bureau of Fire, did look at this, and they were okay with just a fire suppression system, nothing about, um, firescape from a third-story building.
No, sir. As far as I saw, their comments were mainly limited to the fire suppression system, and then I believe there was also comments as far as upgrading the water supply to supplement said fire suppression system.
Okay. I've got some other comments, but if someone wants to ask this, I'd just like to have the floor back in a minute, so. Anyone else?
Finish with Mr. Matthew?
Yes. And I, and I guess this, and maybe the city respond to it, but it, it looks, I know some, some friends that are elderly, because I'm elderly, that have put in the chair systems for access to second floors. And looking at the plans, and maybe I didn't look at it, it looked like some of these stairways were up a half a flight and then up, and then up a half a flight and up a half a flight. And, and I would think that would be extremely difficult, or you'd be, I guess you can go around a curve and go up, but I'm more concerned about coming down than I am going up. And if you have elderly patients, and, and I'm sure they'll put the younger folks and the more mobile folks on the, on the higher floors and the ones that are less on the, the ones that are mobile on the higher floors. But, but still, coming down three flights if there was a fire, God forbid, that, that just is incomprehensible to me that we wouldn't be requiring a, at least a firescape for third and second floor. So I'm going to have problems with this one purely and simply from the safety of the, of the potential clients. The parking, three spaces or maybe four spaces, plus it mentions that there's additional parking on the street. I think we heard from some of the residents that there's inadequate parking for a lot of the, just the residences here. So I think three or four, I know the UDO says that, but we all know the UDO provides, and sometimes, the minimal required. And when you look at the usage, I, I would anticipate with 12 to 13 folks living in there. Plus, the point was brought up that you've got the manager and the staff would take up the, the spaces that's in the back. I, I just think there's all kinds of problems with this. I'm concerned about the parking, I'm concerned about the safety of the I'm concerned about the safety of the residents, and I just cannot support this. Thank you.
Is there any other questions to the staff while he's at the podium? Thank you, Ms. Matthew.
Yeah, I have a real concern about them not locking down who's going to be in there, because they could switch over, and now you have individuals who may be having mental problems. And, you know, so they're not locking it down to who's going to be there. I got a problem with that, because, you know, they're not doing Eastern State and all them places no more, and they try to provide homes for individuals to go, which I don't have a problem with that, but coming among citizens and, you know, who knows? I know I got problems too, though. I'd be like...
I'd like to make a motion for denial of CUP 2024-014.
Okay, we've got a motion for denial. And a second. Any discussion or motion?
I'd like to just make a comment. This is the second time today that we've had a situation involving, the first one was Town Bank, a commercial business going into a residential area, a little different than what we have here. But this is a commercial business that's going to be right in the middle of a residential community that is trying to, because it's in the middle of a historic district, is trying to develop that area. And they are beautiful homes in that area. And the more people that we can attract to that, just like one of the comments that we had about some of these folks that are moving in and fixing those places up, I mean, these are old houses and they are beautiful. And I think that even though this is a CUP request, I can't support it personally.
Any more discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure, I guess I just want to point a clarity. And I know this is just restricted to the application at hand, but I guess I'm hearing that in residential areas, we do not like commercial properties or commercial uses in agriculture areas, I mean residential areas. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't, I'm not saying there shouldn't be any commercial businesses, if I can respond. I'm not saying that we should be against commercial businesses in the middle of residential areas, but I think we have to be very careful and cognizant of the fact that we have people that are living there, some that have lived there for a very long time. And this would change the, tend to change, to me, if I lived next door to a nursing home or residential home like that, it would change, you know, my opinion as to, you know, do I need to move? You know, and that question came up in the previous discussion that we had with Town Bank. But I just think that it's going to change the complexion of the, in many ways, of that area that we're trying to improve and also maintain what they've got. But again, I'm not opposed to having commercial businesses go into residential areas, but I think that by putting this right in the middle of where, in the middle of these homes, beautiful homes, that I don't think it's an improvement. So, and again, you're talking about issues involving parking. We already talked about that. And five, I think there are three places in the back and two places on the side. There are visitors that are going to be coming to this place, and they'd have to park on Penner Street. And Penner Street is not the pro, I don't think it's an appropriate place to have, if you're visiting one of the patients or residences in this place, I don't think it's appropriate to have somebody park on the street and go into a house like that just to visit.
I'd like to add, too. I think this is a good example of...
Mr. Edwards, you want to respond?
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, 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 no. I defer for a moment.
Well, I just want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, but yes, thank you. This is an example of kind of the planning permission's role in that, you know, on paper, I do believe the staff did their diligence, and it did check a lot of the boxes per se. But we, if we've lived in this city and we understand the landscape, and I just, there's so many problems with this. I didn't know where to start, so I was hesitant to comment, but safety, parking, the historic district, I mean, it's just, I didn't, it doesn't make sense to me as a Suffolk resident. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 no. I didn't plan on saying anything today at all. Mr. Chairman, can I ask the gentleman one question real quick? The gentleman that was, that was your proponent, not the opposition gentleman. No, sir, other gentleman, sir. No, 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 the one that's walking. Yeah, sir, I mean, you have heard the comments from the opponents, and you've heard the discussion here. Now, I know you're not the owner of the property, and I can't tell you what to do, and you may not be able to tell what to do. But what I'm hearing does make sense. Now, again, I'm not going to fight the last war, so I ask the question for a reason. But I'm not going to fight the last war today. But my question is, do you have anything rebuttal for someone who's on defense?
There's, it sounds like there are some concerns that could easily be remedied by slight revisions to what's been in the recommendations and in the report so far. We could handle some of those with some architectural changes as far as egress, looking at maybe what type of stair lift or what the more specific details are of a stair lift and how it would operate, or what the plan is to evacuate the building. We could also add parking. The intent with trying to use the parking surfaces that we have was to avoid changing the appearance too much and also to avoid land disturbing activity that would push us into a full-blown site plan. But some of those ideas could, we could actually fix those if we needed to table that and bring it back again with some changes, with more discussion with staff. However, if there are major issues that cannot be overcome in the minds of all those voting today regarding the historic nature, or they feel like they need more limitations on what the age or mental state of the tenants would be, you know, I don't know that I can address the historic part, but parking, limitations on mental state of the tenants and those sort of things, I think we could talk through those in parking and egress. So I don't know if that helps answer your question, if that's where you were driving at, sir.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Michelle, you finish?
Yes.
I have a question of staff from Mr. Wine. I think we're talking about 13 residents. By right, how many residents could we have without going through a CUP process?
In a group home setting, which is permitted as a matter of right in the zoning district, you would be allowed to have up to eight residents that are unrelated by right.
In essence, this request is five over what they could do by right without coming before this body or going to council?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for asking my question, but I still have the one thing that I can't fix, and that is, a lift can only take one person up a step, and that's going to be slowly, yes. So I'm still having the real issue. I don't understand how the proponent was able to wrap their head around just having bedrooms on the second and third floor for assistant, people who need assistance. I don't care if they're 10 or if they're 100. That was my whole problem. Why would you have bedrooms for people who need assistance on the second and third floor? And I couldn't, I still haven't been able to wrap my head around that, so I can't vote for it.
Any other discussions?
Just real quick. So, Mr. Wine, is the 13, is that a condition?
As currently recommended by staff, yes, that would be a condition related to the assisted facility use as proposed, 13 residents.
But if it was eight, we wouldn't even have this on the agenda. Is that what I'm understanding?
If it was eight and firmly fell within our definition of group home versus assisted living facility, yes.
Thank you. There are no other discussion? We call for the vote. We have a motion on the floor for denial. I'm going to clarify that.
Okay, I was about to say.
For denial, and a yes vote is for denial. A no vote is in opposition to denial. Okay, you got that?
Okay.
We'll figure it out. Wine, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to one.
Vote by myself, eh?
I ain't done that.
This will be going to City Council on October 16th with a recommendation for denial. The next and last item on our agenda today is conditional use request, permit request, CUP 2024-00019, A.J. Gators. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-019, submitted by Alfred Zuharz, applicant on behalf of Bennett's Creek Crossing L.C., property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub use on a property located at 3575 Bridge Road, Suite 32, zoning map 12, parcel 55 star 1. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District, and SCOD Special Corridor Overlay District. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-019. Once again, Staff Planner Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a bar and nightclub use at 3575 Bridge Road, Suites 32, 33, and 34. The subject property is located within the northern area, Northern Growth Area in the Inner Ring Suburban Use District and lies in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough. The subject property is located in the B2 General Commercial Zoning District and in the SCOD Special Corridor Overlay District. The property is surrounded by single-family homes to the north and the Nansman Heights subdivision, zoned RLM, Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District, single-family attached condominium units to the south, zoned RU, Residential Urban Zoning District, Harris Teeter and other commercial businesses to the east, zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District, and a Dollar Tree to the west, also zoned B2. The applicant's request is to establish a bar and nightclub use for the purpose of live entertainment within the A.J. Gators Sports Bar and Grill. The applicant seeks this conditional use permit in order to host music bingo, trivia, and karaoke a few nights a week with the intent of helping to bring in business. The applicant also proposes to occasionally host acoustic acts. The restaurant's regular operating hours are from 11:00 a.m. until midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. The live entertainment would be from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and from 11:00 a.m. to midnight Friday and Saturday. There are no proposed changes to the interior layout of the restaurant. Any equipment needed is proposed to be provided by the performers and would be set up on a table as shown on this floor plan. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this application, and none have expressed concern at this time. This proposed use is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding businesses and properties. Being that the proposed use is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding businesses and properties, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-019 with the conditions stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. We're now over the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request? Come up, please.
My name's Michaela Archer. I'm the general manager of the A.J. Gators in Bennett's Creek. I'm here to ask for our entertainment permit. Our entertainment includes trivia, music bingo, karaoke, and occasional acoustic guitar. All of our entertainment is indoors. We have no outdoor entertainment, and we do not charge a cover for any entertainment at all. Because we did not know that we needed a permit, we had entertainment for a while. And during that time, we had no issues, no complaints. And not only did we not have complaints, we have people ask every day when it's coming back. Once we were aware that we needed a permit, we immediately stopped all our entertainment. And my owners and I have done everything asked of us that the city wanted to acquire this permit. In the three or four months that we have not had entertainment, not only has our business suffered money, my staff has suffered, and I know the city has lost taxes as well. We are not a nightclub. We are just a restaurant that wants to provide good, clean entertainment and fun for the community around us. Thank you.
Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? None? Is anyone to speak in opposition? None again? We're closed to public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I've got a question for staff. I guess, Kevin. These nightclubs that we've been approving, and I'm second guessing myself, on Friday night and Saturday night, are we going to 12 o'clock or 11 o'clock? Is what's been the standard here?
The standard conditions, as recommended by staff for these types of uses, is midnight on Friday and Saturday and 11:00 p.m. during weeknights.
Okay, I was just second guessing myself. With that being said, I live a quarter mile from this place and been doing some work on my kitchen, so needless to say, I've been eating there a whole lot. And I just don't foresee this being a nightclub. I know that's coming back up in front of council tomorrow night, the terminology nightclub versus, and I realize it's the time issue is what's bringing this to the table. Is that correct?
Yes, so this offers a really good example of what would still require a CUP, based upon the hours in which they wish to operate the live entertainment. If the cutoff was 10:00 p.m. and council approves the ordinance text amendment tomorrow night on their agenda, then that would be a moot point. They would be able to do that by right. But because they do want to do it until 11:00 p.m., as indicated in their application, it would still necessitate the need for a conditional use permit.
Okay. With that, I make a motion for approval of 2024-019.
Second. Second. Any discussion or motion? Here or none? Mr. Wine, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations. This will go to City Council on October 16th with the recommendation from this body for approval. That concludes our public hearings for today. I don't think we have any old business. Under new business, the appointment for the fiscal year 2026-2035 Capital Improvement Plan Subcommittee. I've spoken with Commissioner Vice Chair Staler and Commissioner Goodman, and they agreed to be our representative on that board this year. to be our representative on that board this year. And the status report, Mr. Wine?
Yes, I think first I'll go over the preliminary subdivision plats that were approved over the last month or so. Let me make sure I'm, okay. That includes two preliminary plats, PSB 2022-004, the Turlington at Millstone, and then PSB 2023-001, this is Art Ray at Millstone. These are adjacent to one another. The Turlington at Millstone preliminary plat includes 60 detached lots on 40 acres, 30 of which are developable, and then on the Millstone piece, it's 147 detached, single-family lots on 40 acres, of which, of which 11 acres or so are zoned O and I, and 4.3 acres are critical areas. So these will kind of be operated and developed in coordination, but they did have separate proffers on them, so they're to be developed from that regard independently. As it relates to the status report, let me get that real quick. We had three items go before City Council at their August 21st meeting. That included the conditional use permit related to the solar facility proposed on White Marsh Road called Scarp Solar. Before the City Council meeting on August 21st, in advance of that, the applicant did notify us in writing that they wish to defer consideration on that for 90 days. City Council at their meeting accepted that request, and as such, they moved to defer action on that until their November 20th meeting. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-11, this was the machine shop request to operate a machine shop there on Freeman Mill Road. That was approved with the conditions as proposed by staff. And then the comprehensive plan update that went before City Council at their August 21st meeting, and that was, action on that was deferred for 90 days, and will come back November 20th. Includes my rule?
Any comments from the commissioners? Here or none? It was Danny John.